Allocated efficiency viewpoint. Not even not-for-profit, the system's scaling investment horizon, they do things which destroy these intrinsic characteristics. Unfortunate reality is most for-profit super funds atomise member value wherever you look. Complicated and opaque product structures, higher fees, suboptimal asset allocation and related party bouting are geared to deliver to shareholders rather than actual members of their funds. The commercial structure, which is decided by trustees and the commercial entities which obviously appoint them, places an emphasis on choice. As the submissions from Dr Wilson Cy noted, the trustees of for-profit funds issue investment responsibilities and instead leave members to select from thousands of investment options for which they need costly services of financial advisor to navigate. These complex product structures and associated advice significantly add to operational costs, which are about twice that of industry funds. In the for-profit segment, choice is encouraged because the cognitive limitations of members are well understood and profits can be easily extracted by encouraging switching, by triggering buy-sell margins not captured in the optional return data used by the commission and the use of costly intermediated investment products and options where fees are extracted through the investment value chain. The commission should reflect more deeply on the appropriateness of these models in a compulsory system rather than accommodate them under the misapprehension that they add value for any meaningful cohort of members. It is saying something when the staff of for-profit conglomerates don't invest their super in this way. Their staff funds are merely not-for-profit structures with a limited number of investments with most members utilising the defaults. The commission would also be aware the most successful fund in the APRA fund level dataset for Goldman Sachs JABI Ware staff is similarly structured, although with a single investment option. So the track record of choice, particularly in the hands of for-profit funds, is not good. The simple equation and conflict is this: for-profit funds appear to prioritise their commercial endeavour over member outcomes. This is understandable. Shareholders rightly expect a return on capital, but it is harmful and difficult to reconcile with the system objectives, which rightly put member at the centre rather than providing a means for economic rents to be extracted. So to cut to the chase, what is the significance of this in respect to the report's findings and recommendations? In essence, the report identifies the symptoms but misdiagnises the underlying causes. As a consequence, prescriptions do too little to address systematic underperformance in the parts of the industry that have had two decades to lift their game but have not. For the tourist segment, the commission relies largely on better disclosure and tougher prudential oversight, something which the for-profit segment will strenuously resist and probably won't work. Like previous exercises, too much faith is placed in member choice and consumer sovereignty as a panacea, notwithstanding clear evidence market exploitation of choice is associated with higher costs and poorer returns. So the key challenge is how to connect members to good products without relying on informed consumers and then ensuring these members are not sold out of default except in their best interest. The informed choice model advanced by the PC is untested and will very likely and will very likely in practice leave members too prone to the choice sales model. We agree fully there needs to be merit-based process. However, we continue to argue occupational linkages are valuable from a default perspective, given common characteristics of occupational cohorts, including age, education, income, geographic location, certain risk factors and as the system focuses more on retirement mortality. These are aspects which we'll expand on detail in our submission on the draft report. Furthermore, we continue to argue the appropriate location from merit-based quality filter is a fair work commission, albeit with further improvement to ensure comprehensive coverage and improved transparency in decision-making. A transparent judicial process is important for this area of public policy and its separation from the finance sector is a strength and guards against finance sector capture and political interference. We're very happy to collaborate further on these and other matters.
Great. Thanks very much, Matt. You covered a lot of ground there, so let's see how we can go through it. We might kind of start to follow your batting order. I guess the key finding of our report was that there seemed to be twin problems in the system that are causing much harm to many members and that is unintended multiple accounts and entrenched underperformance. On the entrenched underperformance and the unintended multiple accounts, our report and the evidence base suggests that they're system-wide, they occur in every segment of the system. So I'm just sort of struggling a little bit with you're delineating a governance model being the determinant of performance, but we found entrenched underperformance across every segment of the system. There it, the retail segment, the industry segment, the corporate segment, the government segment.
Okay. So, look, a few matters there and there's a few things in that question. When it comes to entrenched underperformance and persistence of underperformance, the report rightly notes that persistence of underperformance is concentrated in the retail sector. That's not to say there aren't underperforming industry funds, there are a handful, but they're very small and relative to the vast majority of members in not-for-profit defaults. The quantum in respect to the value lost in a systemic sense is very small compared to what we can see is occurring in the retail sector, particularly where you've got very large funds with very significant assets and lots of members underperforming very significantly.
Well, let's focus on the default segment because the default segment, the MySuper segment, should be the system example and indeed it does outperform the choice segment as our evidence showed. But we did find when we managed to, albeit we probably killed three staff members in the process of doing it, managed to stitch together the three and a half years of product level data on MySuper with another eight or nine years reported to SuperRatings to get a long-term net investment return. We found when we did that analysis, there were 26 persistently underperforming default products. And you mentioned that the overwhelming majority are retail. Well, so the metrics are 12 of the 26 were retail and 10 were industry funds. So I'm not sure what evidence base you're referring to when you say, at least for the default segment, that the overwhelming majority is retail. Indeed, when you then look through to the member harm, where we identified, you know, there's about $62 billion of assets and 1.7 million member accounts, which is still a lot of member accounts, appreciate it's not the majority. The good news there was of the 10 best performing default products, they did have over half of members. So that was really the glass half-full story for us. But off the 1.7 million member accounts, 990,000 are with retail, but 620,000 are with industry funds. So just trying to understand, if you're saying that it's the governance model that makes the difference, why is it that we still have it occurring in both retail and industry? So that's why we found it was a system-wide problem. You're right in saying it's more concentrated and it is more egregious in the retail segment, but it's alive and well with a lot of member accounts in every segment.
Look, we'll come back to the commission with some further analysis. It is not helpful and I acknowledge that you have noted that the commission's making use of some data which is not available in the public domain for its benchmarking purposes. It would be better if that data was made available.
So you've got SuperRatings data and you've got the three and a half years of MySuper. You've been in this industry a lot longer than we have. So you can do this analysis. We know AustralianSuper has done this analysis, so.
Well, the PC's analysis which you're referring to, and there's some different types of analysis in the report around around defaults, one of which I referred to in my opening remarks. The PC's preferred approach is to benchmark against the product's asset allocation. So since 2014, there's been no asset allocation data available for MySuper products. It's collected by APRA, but for some reason, I suspect I know the reason why, it's not been made available publicly. So as I said, I think it'd be helpful for transparency for that data to be made available publicly because it's actually central to the benchmarking approach which the Productivity Commission's utilised.
So we've made public in our technical supplement four how we've, what data we've used, how we've analysed it, what assumptions we've made. So you can come back to us in your post-draft report submission with any feedback on that. We had a technical roundtable which worked out the methodology with which we'd applied back in stage one, which now seems a bit of a lifetime ago. But we're more than happy to look at, if you've done the data differently, we're happy to have a look at your data and review it. But the feedback that we've had from technical experts in the sector and including the feedback we had from AustralianSuper yesterday was that the portfolio benchmarking analysis that we've done is pretty consistent with what they've found as well. But we're happy to have a look at your numbers as well.
So, look, so this is important because it comes back to my comments. With the benchmarking approach, you're controlling for asset allocation, that's one thing. There's some adjustments which is occurring in respect to administrative expenses as well, depending on the type of analysis, which we think is probably inappropriate if you're trying to understand some of the issues around efficiency because it lowers the benchmark for funds which have high admin and operational expenses. Now, I note that there's been some technical analysis around the significance of that and you think it doesn't particularly change outcomes. And that's probably a testament to the extent of underperformance which we see predominantly in retail products. But certainly we'll come back to the commission in respect to our submissions. But the benchmarking approach which you've utilised, which looks at the individual product, there's different ways to benchmark and I think, and I did listen into AustralianSuper's commentary yesterday, there's a lot of emphasis which is placed on the individual portfolio benchmarking that subtracts differences or value which is added by asset allocation. So, and there's that point which I made around the adjustments in respect to administrative costs which might result in more benchmarks.
In your opening statement, you said that, you know, this was sort of landmark stuff making these comparisons and that one of the problems in the past has been that people have been able to hide behind various sort of complications about why we can't compare funds. So we really went through a very tortuous process really to try and come out with what's the very best methodology we can come up with to make a comparison. So that, neutralising for that asset allocation was really the first time that we're able to compare funds that had those different allocations. So if we take that away, if that's what you're suggesting there, we're back in the old game of, oh, but then it's all just about other things and we can't make these comparisons. And so if there's another way of looking at the data and we can make some useful conclusions out of that, I don't think it negates what we've got here. You might have an alternative that would give us further insights and we'd be happy to look at it. But I'm very concerned that if we get into this argument again about, oh, this methodology, somehow or other there's going to be a holy grail of, you don't have to equalise for anything, you don't have to take anything out of the data, we just got the raw stuff and somehow we can make a comparison. We can't do it. So I think if you've got a suggestion about how we could do it better or how we could add to that, that would be really helpful in your submission.
But I'm full of two other things. So firstly, when we did make it asset allocation agnostic, that was for fund, segment level, fund level and choice product. For MySuper, we held a higher standard. Instead of saying for all the products, whatever your asset allocation, because we know that there's life cycle products in there with peculiar asset allocations. For the analysis and the numbers that I just talked about that are in our report, we actually held them to a higher standard of the average asset allocation for MySuper product. So that's not at play in the numbers that I just went through. So I think the thing to keep also in mind is we were trying to do distribution based on portfolio benchmarks. So are you adding or detracting from value in the market based on the industry's experience of what taxes do they pay? What admin fees do they have and what investment fees? But we then did sensitivity analysis to see whether or not those assumptions really have changed the outcomes and that's detailed in chapter two and technical supplement four. So we've laid out exactly how we've done that and the sensitivity analysis suggests that sorts of things that you're talking about just aren't material to the outcome. So it kind of leaves us in a world where in addition, we also then said what the absolute investment returns for those different cohorts of underperforming and overperforming and in the no man's land. So we've kind of done it all. So I don't sort of struggle with your opening remarks suggesting that there's no problems in the industry segment, it's all in the retail segment. Our evidence suggests that that's simply not the case.
I didn't, I didn't say that. I said the problems are less pronounced and the quantum of the inefficiency is far less. Now, in respect to have carefully gone through the technical supplement and in particular, a very revealing table is table 4.23 where fixed asset allocations are utilised and there actually is some data around account assets and numbers which underperform. In the retail segment, according to that table, over the period 2005 to 2016, static asset allocations, 94% of assets in the retail sector underperform and 96% of accounts. The corresponding numbers for the industry fund segment is 17% and 24%.
Okay, we're back in the world of averages and that. But anyway, so let's get back to the policy stuff that really matters and what really matters for members. So we've identified twin problems. I guess you agree that unintended multiple accounts and entrenched underperformance are twin problems in the system. How would you fix them?
Okay, so the issue around multiple accounts, the up until now largely, the systems relied upon individuals obviously to engage and if they have multiple accounts to consolidate them. The systems to do that in an efficient way are relatively new. There's, you know, I would argue, I think, you know, many who understand the problem would argue that it really shouldn't be incumbent on members necessarily to do this. The system should better address it. Now, there are a number of ways to potentially do that and obviously one way which Productivity's put forward is essentially to have a single, a single default for life. Noting however, there's obviously a good deal of people who are outside the default segment and they ended up there somehow. So there'd still need to be some mechanism presumably if they left that default in order to consolidate accounts going forward. So that's largely just a systems issue. We've obviously put forward the proposition that multiple accounts could have and government well before what was announced in this year's budget could have had a far more active process around consolidation of inactive accounts where they arose.
So we've heard, the government has made initiatives to try to mop up spilt milk. But when you have a system that architecturally creates multiple accounts every time somebody changes jobs or the potential to create unintended multiple accounts. And we're not talking about an insignificant problem, it's 10 million of the 30 million. So one in three member accounts are unintended multiple accounts. So wouldn't the good public policy solution be to stop them being created? So we've come up with default only once. Are there other ways of stopping them from being created or or can you agree that defaulting only once is really the only way of stopping them from being created? Because I think it's incumbent upon government in a world of compulsion, particularly given the very regressive impacts that we've identified in the draft report of what these unintended multiple accounts do to members' balances in retirement, so.
Sure. So there are a number of different ways to skin and cap, I think. The PC's obviously advanced one potential solution. There are some downsides to that. We'll continue to make the point that occupational occupational linkages and determination around defaults. If it works effectively, right, and we're talking about, we've certainly advanced the proposition that there needs to be a merit-based process and fewer funds. That in itself, if people are remaining in the same occupations, then that should tend to reduce the extent of multiple accounts in the system, coupled with systems which actually consolidate accounts if necessary.
So a couple of questions. So firstly, we set out a lot of context in the report about the modern workforce today and how it's changed since 27 years ago. When job turnover occurs today, more than 50% of the members, 50% of workers actually change industry sector. Thus, the incidence of unintended multiple accounts is only going to grow. The incidence of multiple jobs now is about 8% of the labour market. It was about 2% 27 years ago. So we know that unintended multiple accounts are only going to become greater and the level of creation is going to become greater. So defaulting only once is what we've identified. You said that there's costs associated with defaulting only once. What are the costs, Matt, for the member?
So this comes back to whether or not the default which they might go into. And again, under the model, it's not necessarily assumed that they'd be defaulted into that. I mean, under the choice architecture, someone could select some other product, you know, from a menu, given the way that single-touch payroll's been rolled out. Obviously, the commission anticipates that the best-in-show 10 may not necessarily be stable over time. So funds may come in and out of it.
So if we've got a system in default where we've elevated MySuper, so we've got a bit of a bad tail and we've got a simple best-in-show to help members, so they've got a best-in-show to choose from and then they've got the MySuper authorised products, which are the good products, where's the risk of a defaulting only once in that system?
Well, I think that's what the commission's articulated, that.
But you said that there was a cost in defaulting only once. I don't understand what those costs are.
Oh, okay. So the point I was making is if a person's defaulted into a single fund, that on the best-in-show, it may be the case that that fund no longer remains in the top 10 list.
So they would still have to have MySuper authorisation. So you've got your top 10, which will change over time and we want it to. But then the MySuper authorisation are all good funds. None of them are in the tail. So I don't understand the cost to the member.
Okay, so I guess that's assuming that the MySuper authorisation process in terms of the quality filter that applies there is significantly improved from what exists today.
Yep, otherwise we wouldn't have the defaulting ones. We wouldn't have the defaulting ones today as well.
Can I just say about the MySuper authorisation process? The commission is aware obviously that there's considerable variation in performance between MySuper products. Some offer CPI plus three, some offer NHE CPI plus five. So what the commission is recommending is in effect that the MySuper authorisation process will result in such a levelling up of net performance outcomes among MySuper products that there's almost no risk in moving from the best-in-show list into the MySuper universe. Now, what the commission has proposed in terms of strengthened elevation standards is we welcome that emphasis on stronger standards. But we don't think it's sufficiently strong enough to not only remove poor performing MySuper products, but to actually actively lift net performance outcomes across the whole MySuper system that make them roughly a proxy for the best-in-show best-in-show list. So what you might get is a CPI plus five fund in the shortlist and then somebody moving into MySuper product which is CPI plus three. Both under the commission's proposals might be judged to be in the best interests of members, but there's a 2% performance difference.
So I don't think anybody has suggested the best-in-show is based on a single investment strategy. There's a number of principles guiding best-in-show and it would be dynamic over time. I think at the end of the day, what we're saying is there will always be a distribution of performance. We just want to lock off the entrenched underperformance. We would like members to have default into good performing funds or top performing funds. So, anyway, so the other, is IndustrySuper Australia still proposing, and this is something we read in the media, the balance rollover model? Is that something, I'm just trying to make sure, is that something that you had recommended in the media?
Well, we, I mean, I think for about the past five or six years that we've suggested that the issue of multiple accounts is something which is addressed in a systemic way. So obviously, automatic account consolidation is one way to do that and it will need to be a necessary part of the system going forward regardless.
So talk us through, because, okay, so we've got two options on the table for getting rid of unintended multiple accounts. Ours is which is default once unless the member decides to go somewhere else. The other option is, so the member's account is stapled to the member and goes with the member. The other option that you've put forward is that the balance stays with the member. So every time a member changes a job, their balance goes to the next default product.
Unless they affirmatively stay with an existing default, which they have.
Well, I think we've already established that when job turnover occurs today, half of people go to a new industry sector. So they're likely to be going to another. So just talk us through then, how many turnovers would be occurring with the balance rollover situation every year given the current labour market? How many people are you having them flip to a new account? I'm just trying to work out, coming back to the point that was raised earlier today, how many, how many super funds are you expecting a member to go through in their working life under the balance rollover model?
Look, we can come back to the commission with some thinking around, we'll have a look at the data around labour force turnover and occupational, occupation changes over time. As I said, I think the commission's probably realised though that having a model which is based on effectively the first timing pool or the turnover model with a best-in-show, it's going to be a very slow process in terms of dealing with multiple accounts unless there's actually a affirmative system-wide process to actively consolidate.
Yep. So we've got a whole bunch of recommendations building on tax office and government work there. That's dealing with mopping up the spilt milk. We want to make sure that we get the architecture right so we don't create the unintended multiple accounts going forward. So, so let's keep talking then about the balance rollover. So you'll come back to us with how many? I think, and we're doing some work on this as well because this is a proposal that you guys have put on the table as an alternative to default once. So it would be good to know how many rollovers. We'll do, we'll do our analysis. How do you deal with people with multiple jobs?
So, look, the, in those circumstances, it's most likely that they're better having a single fund, I'd agree. Now, again, it would depend upon whether or not multiple jobs which they have are in different industries or not or whether or not they're working in a single industry where there's likely to be potentially a single default.
Okay. The evidence will show you there across more than one industry sector when they have them and it's now 8% of the population working for us. How do you deal then with, if they're rolling over every time they change a job, with eligibility for TPD insurance? That was, we hadn't even thought of that. It was put to us by an inquiry participant yesterday that that would be extremely problematic.
I, I'm not sure that it necessarily would be.
I think it's the way the tax arrangements work and you have a rollover from a previous one. This is as expected. So we haven't done further work on it ourselves yet. But the amount of the TPD sum that you would receive is the tax-free amount you receive is based on the timing from, from the precursor fund before you rolled over. So continually rolling over is short, reduces the amount of tax-free benefit you get once you roll into a new fund.
I, so I mean, this would be, if it is an issue, it would be one which potentially be occurring at the moment. I haven't heard of this issue raised before, but certainly we can have a look at it.
So again, our counterfactual is not what's happening today. What would happen comparing default once only with your proposal of the balance rolling over? So there's a whole bunch of things that we'd like to hear back from you in terms of trying to consider the relative merit of the two because we agree that they both get rid of the initiation of the unintended multiples except for multiple jobs. So I guess we want to know how many rollovers per year, what would be the additional admin costs attached to them? How you would deal with the change in investment strategy? How you would deal with market events of any potential sequencing risks for the members? How you deal with problems with insurance? How do you deal with multiple jobs? I think that's probably it.
So I was thinking there's also issues around compliance for employers, particularly where you might have multiple jobs. So how do you signal to an employer if someone's moved to another fund now? And they need me to go, at what point, if there's someone in a multiple job, does the employer then have to move to making contributions to accept the fund and there, those issues as well.
Because I think it would be helpful for us because going forward, we want to, I think we've all agreed, we want to stop unintended multiple accounts from occurring. We want to make sure government's doing the best with the ATO to mop up the spilt milk. But going forward, we've got two options on the table. Between now and finalising our report, we have to assess the relative merits of them. So, and can't expect you to absorb all that today. So we'll send you a list of the unintended consequences of the balance rollover model that it would be great for you to assess in your post-draft reports.
Can I just say, just comment on the unintended consequences perhaps of the emphasis and continuity of membership that the commission has embraced? Of course, the big risk there, which we don't think the AAC model is particularly good at, is particularly weak at, is that members are sold into a product early stages in their lives into a poor quality product, perhaps via their bank when they open their first bank account and they remain in that product for the rest of their lives. If they don't engage and it appears at the top of any screen they encounter and therefore they tick it because that's the year. That's a reasonable way to proceed.
So our best-in-show list and the elevated MySuper list don't have underperforming products. If you're talking about.
No, but it does say existing default at the top, your existing fund. So your existing fund could be a fund that you have joined via your bank.
Yep. So I guess what we're trying to do is create then a healthy competitive dynamic in both the default segment and you're talking, I think, then about products in the choice segment?
Yeah.
Or are you talking about default MySuper products that are retail?
I'm talking about an employee who finds themselves, perhaps because they are sold into by a, by a bank when they open a bank account, into a poor performing fund and that fund remains with them because they're disengaged effectively for most of their working life. That will cause significant costs.
So you're right if it was somebody who's not a new workforce entrant under our model that goes to the ATO website to get their tax file number and then is. Then is prompted to a best in show list and a my super authorised list, under the current world, if you had a new job entrant, they have none of those protections. But they, and they could be, um, sold, uh, and, and not an underperforming product. Um, that's a problem of the current system, under our system for the new job entrant, they are, they make the choice when they go to get their tax file number. They've got the best in show list and the elevated my super list.
Hmm.
So I'm not sure how they're going to have.
But my understanding is when they encounter the form, their existing fund will be listed at the top of the form, beyond screen, is that right? An existing fund could be, uh, a, a, a poor quality fund that they've been previously sold into or nudged into by their employer.
So if it's a my super authorised fund under our system, the duds would have been removed and they would no longer be in it.
I think you're right though, if you're, if you're in an existing choice fund, you go to a new job. You've got to fill out the form, the first thing you'll see will be your existing fund, yes.
Yes, which, and many people will naturally think, well, that's my existing fund, I may as well stick with that.
So, so then the question is then, would they still choose that fund and say, I still want to stay with that, or if. The alternative is, I then, my balance moves with me to a new default fund, but I've made a choice before. What was, I, I'm not sure that, that it would be that different for you to say, well, you've got a fund or you can default into. We're going to make this balance with you to some new default, which we, which we're going to maybe do. So are you saying that you wouldn't show it? How would you deal with the, with the person re-entering?
Well, I would have, I would have, I would have a fund connected to the workplace that has gone through the, the quality filter. And then automatic consolidation when they move.
So you wouldn't show their existing fund, so we didn't have the multiple again?
No, I wouldn't use the, the approach that's been proposed by the commission. So I would have a, a default linked to the workplace that has been through the quality filter, so there's a good default. They join that when they join the, the workforce of that employer. And then when they move, they join an appropriate default fund in the new employer and automatically consolidate.
So you've said that they've started in a bad choice product?
Yeah.
So you're saying you get rid of any choice and everybody gets defaulted? Sorry, we're probably going to waste too much time.
I think it's.
That's a, that's a, yeah, that's a bad line of discussion, but anyway, let's, let's. Treat that as diminishing marginal returns and move on.
Yeah, I do get your point though, and it's something we can look at, I understand.
And, and we do want these changes to really lift performance in the retail choice segment as well. For people that are not in the default my super segment, which is a lot of our changes are about, we do want these. Changes to trickle over, people to think, I've got a choice product, here's a best in show, what return am I getting from my choice product? What could I get from a my super authorised or a best in show product? So we are wanting the changes in the default system as the exemplar, and it needs to be the exemplar, to trickle through very quickly. And the regulators to be playing a far more active role in looking at the appropriateness and the fees in the choice products today. Um. Best in show politicisation, um, I think we won't go through all the quotes we could. Use historically about the politicisation of F W C appointments, so let's not go there. Um, I don't know if you were here a little bit earlier, um, Angela and I. Proposed a way of de-politicising the appointment of who would decide who is the expert panel. Um, it'd be good to get your thoughts on that.
Um, could, could you very, very quickly?
Oh, sorry, if you did, so, so I think we can all agree that history has shown indeed many smart wise folk. We can, there's hundreds of quotes that we can say about how politicised the F W C appointment process is. People have then suggested, we wanted, um, the best in show to be accountable to the government of the day. Who decides best in shows accountable to the government of the day in two ways. One, that the government of the day makes those appointments, but two, the process is incredibly transparent and open such that. That panel in deciding who's best in show will be the highly scrutinised, um, selection process in Australia. Now, people have suggested that we can't escape politicisation of who is the expert panel for the best in show because the government would be making the appointment.
Hmm.
One idea we've suggested is to say, well, what if you were to have a selection. Committee deciding the best in show panel, and that selection committee could not be seen to be politicised. So that selection committee, for example, and we should have mentioned this to the Reserve Bank before we decided to clarify, would be chaired by the governor of the Reserve Bank.
Hmm.
With two other statutory appointees, perhaps the A triple C chair, because again, statutory appointee knows investments, financial markets. Um, and is not, is a statutory appointee, has no fear or favour, but not directly involved in the super system and one other, maybe the tax commissioner. So if those three were to decide who was on the expert panel for the appointment of the expert panel. That is an idea that we're, we're suggesting as a way of de-politicising it.
Sure, we can give that some further thought, I mean, I think, um. Yeah, I can see obviously it's attempting to diffuse the potential effects around. Political influences around selection, albeit indirectly, because those statutory appointments you refer to. Ultimately, uh, will be appointed as well, but I can understand where you're coming from.
But so the Reserve Bank governor is for seven years, um. Chair of the A triple C, I think it's five years, tax commissioner is for seven years, so without fear or favour. They would be able to decide an expert panel, I think that's about as de-politicised as we think we could get, anyway, so it'd be good to get your feedback on that. Um, another thing, in terms of wanting to keep it all in the, the workplace system, I guess two questions there, firstly. In the context of a modern workforce where half of people when they change jobs going forward are changing to a new industry sector. What tailoring is required to a superannuation for a default member in accumulation by their occupation?
Yeah, so I think, um, obviously there's some examples which the commission's considered, so. Vopello's working in higher risk industries, obviously insurance is a relevant point.
So let's set aside insurance for a second, just purely for superannuation. What tailoring is required by occupation for superannuation?
So, so when we, we'll come back in our response to the draft report. Talking a little bit more around occupational characteristics, which we think could be relevant, I mentioned some of them in my opening remarks in respect to. Uh, age, educational status for specific occupations, uh, income, geographic location. Uh, those risk factors which I refer to and mortality probably may well be an important one, particularly as the system. Uh, is, becomes more focused in respect to retirement income products.
So if, if you could do it but separate out insurance, because we, we do realise there isn't an issue with high risk. Employees in, say, construction work or the like where, where they might need different insurance, but I guess. The purpose of superannuation is superannuation, not insurance, um, and we know that that's a hard juggling act for trustee boards to do. Um, but apart from that example, we're yet to have hard evidence put to us, particularly given that. Um, we've moved away from a world where new job entrant today. Is a construction worker for the rest of their life, with people actually changing jobs across segments, but if you've got other data that you could share with us, I'll let, that would be great.
I, I guess on that, we, we've found it hard to identify examples in the way that funds are currently structured. Where the superannuation side of the, of, of the fund is different according to occupational difference, so. If you had examples of, of existing funds that show us how superannuation was structured differently according to different. Characteristics of the cohort, they cover on the superannuation side, not the insurance side, that would be helpful.
I think one, one issue that's perhaps relevant to that is the question of employer compliance. So there are certain industries where employer compliance and S G arrears are real and systematic, systematic problem. Such as in construction, but also in hospitality and so on. Now, in those sectors, the industry funds that serve those sectors have their own proactive compliance processes, they chase, actively chase and identify arrears. Uh, partly through a collective vehicle run through I F S, but also, uh, they'll sometimes have their own in-house, uh, arrears, uh, collection process. We think that's a very valuable, uh, service to members, it takes seriously the funds fiduciary duties. They proactively pursue arrears, some of the big funds collect up to thirty million dollars a year in unpaid S G. Now, there is obviously a risk that if an industry such as construction or hospitality becomes much more diversified. Including funds that don't have any compliant, proactive compliance function. I, I think I'm right in saying that almost all retail funds do not have a proactive compliance, uh, function. That, that, that diversification will be a risk to members. Because you'll have more employers who think that they can get away with non-payment of S G.
And would most industry funds have that?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, so there's two ways they do it, some do it in-house, like Host Plus.
Yep.
Some do, they run, run it through an organisation called Industry Fund Credit Control.
Okay, thank you. Matt, coming back to a point that you raised at the beginning, which is a really important one, we also want to better understand. The drivers of underperformance, um, because there is a, a material systemic difference between the performance of. Um, industry funds and retail funds.
Hmm.
That's something, and, and we could only do a little bit of initial analysis around that, it didn't look like it was strategic asset allocation or size of fund. We want to do more work on that to better understand it. You, as, as I understand it, think it's all about the governance model, albeit all trustees of super funds have to be not for profit, so it's kind of like a bit of a. But, but that said, where there are related parties, um, providing services, we can understand conflicts come into play and thus. The full profit is just lurking outside, um, but it's also lurking outside for industry funds where you source from, um, uh, from, from wholesale providers as well. But you might be doing it better, industry funds might be doing it better. So we were hampered by doing that with the fund survey, we, we just didn't get the net investment returns by asset class and fees and costs by asset class and related party. Incidents of transactions and the fees and costs, so as you know, we've gone back out to CEOs at the funds and I think from the feedback we're getting from the team. Um, smiling at the poor team member who's doing the survey, um, the, the funds now all of a sudden. This time of the year now magically engaged and wanting to be helpful, so. We're hoping that in about six weeks' time, we'll be able to share that analysis. Um, in terms of really what's driving the systemic difference of performance between retail and, and industry funds.
I think, so you received a number of submissions, you'd be aware of previous APRA research on this issue around related party arrangements, so previous APRA, APRA research. Uh, by, um, Bruce Arnold and Kevin Liu around related party transactions was pretty stark. Um, in respect to the engagement of related party, um, service providers. There's been no subsequent types of analysis of that sort undertaken by APRA. However, the APRA, um, uh, annual superannuation bulletin does include some tables around the use of. Service providers, those which are either in-house, independent or related. The retail sector appears to have a far higher concentration of service providers, which is either in-house or related party. Uh, in terms of quantum of dollars now, uh, the, uh, submission, I think, which is made. By Kevin Liu, who I think was at the hearings yesterday in Sydney, um, stepped through the, the relationship of the governance to the commercial model and then the structure. Uh, so really, I think in his, in his submission, the academic research he's undertaken and drawing on obviously his previous work at APRA. He explained how, uh, as I mentioned in my opening remarks, is a commercial endeavour, uh, in respect to, uh. Full profit funds and the R S Es can indeed be full profit, so R S Es. Uh, can distribute dividends to shareholders, that does occur. Uh, it's not necessarily transparent, but if you go through the financial statements, you can find sorts of dividends, um. I think C B A in the last three years across its, uh, one of its R S Es has distributed half a billion dollars in dividends. Back to the parent entity, but that's just the tip of the iceberg, because obviously there's a related entities which also too are generating margins. Um, the, uh, so, uh, look, I, I do hope that. In respect to the survey, there's better quality data that's made available. Um, you'd obviously know, you know, it is a very challenging area, um, the. You know, the, the, the sectoral benchmarking which you've done, I think, will, it starts to explain what's going on. So we can see the difference between the relevant benchmarks for the sectors would be explained by asset allocation. Um, then there's some value add, which, uh, obviously the not-for-profit funds have been able to achieve over their benchmark. In the retail sector, there's significant underperformance relative to the benchmark now. And it's not explained by explicit admin fees, so what's going on there essentially is there's value that's being captured between the underlying asset classes. And what members are receiving, which isn't necessarily transparent. Uh, as you know, the APRA data collections, uh, suffer very significantly at the moment in respect to transparency around. Fees, costs and expenses, and really many retail funds have structured themselves in a way to shelter themselves from that sort of disclosure. Um, and they've lobbied, you know, vigorously to resist disclosure. Um, and limitedly extended that disclosure to the R S E entity itself rather than the related party.
So we've got a tranche of recommendations around governance, um. For fund governance and for system governance, but particularly for fund governments around sort of disclosure and, um. Uh, making sure the right people are on, uh, trustee boards, we're focused on skills, um, not, not. Um, mandated numbers of different sorts of people and how they're appointed, but, um. Do our governance recommendations go far enough? In terms of getting greater disclosure around related party, making sure that the right calibre people around the trustee board table, regulators being members champions? Are, are there areas where you, you think our recommendations don't go far enough, or there's recommendations that you think aren't wide in dealing with the problem, Matt?
Yeah, so look, I, I did listen to the testimony yesterday with Kevin Liu, there was some discussion around the governance recommendations, so. Uh, the issue of affiliation and the affiliation of directors on boards is a major issue. Um, as I said, the fundamental conflict which exists within full profit entities is that there's a commercial endeavour that's underway and. It appears as if they're not reconciling, uh, their conflicting interests and duties between members and obviously the commercial imperatives adequately. Um, there are provisions in the C I S Act at the moment which are intended to, uh, address those issues, they don't appear to be effective. Um, there needs to be, uh, look, regardless of the regulatory regime. Uh, I anticipate there's all sorts and ways and means in which these institutions will try and game regulations. Um, in order to continue to, uh, extract, you know, outsized, um, uh, margins from superannuation. It's a significant, it's a, it's a glaring issue in the system. Um, and as I said, I'm not sure necessarily the idea that continuing to accommodate it is a sensible thing.
Well, I think we can all agree that wherever these things lead to entrenched underperformance. Across the system, we want to make sure that they're removed, so, um. Thank you both, um, Matt and Michael for joining us this morning, I'm, I'm sorry that we've run over time, but it was a very good discussion to have and we very much appreciate it. We look forward to getting your post draft report submission, and I can now invite you to have a lovely cup of coffee outside, as I suggest that we all take a break for. Ten minutes, we are now running behind, but I thought we would with today's participants, so thanks very much.
Thanks very much, thank you.
Thank you.
Majority of members are already in the system and we don't see any research on the implications of these proposals on the best interests of the existing member cohort, especially those that are in funds that are exceeding the benchmark. There's also a real risk that requiring members to choose a fund once for life when they first enter the workforce will compound member engagement, sorry, disengagement. And this is contrary to the Commission's statement in the report. The Commission's analysis has uncovered systemic problems, not just in the default sector. We urge the Commission to go further to improve members' retirement outcomes in two key areas. First, in relation to choice and SMSF members. While underperformance issues are identified in the draft report, recommendations to fix these are absent or largely absent. The majority of retirement savings are in choice, so this can impact the most people. And then secondly, fees and costs, particularly for members of retail funds. The Commission's performance analysis concluded that overall choice members receive lower returns than default members. The main recommendation for improving the lot of these members is to implement dashboards for all investment options. We have long called for the choice dashboard regime to be implemented and we welcome the recommendation. However, while it's important, disclosure recommendations do not go nearly far enough, given the Commission's findings that the sector is saturated in underperforming products and most people are best served by basic no-frills product. Many people also choose to move to these underperforming funds on the back of advice that is not in their best interests. But a regulatory intervention is therefore warranted to reduce the number of choice products and also the number of people switching into them. And we think the Commission can strengthen its recommendations in this regard. Secondly, the Commission concluded it's difficult for members to compare fees and costs. We agree, we've long called for accurate comparable fees and cost data for every investment option. However, given the Commission's analysis found there is a cohort of retail products that have persistently high fees, relying on disclosure alone is not enough, so further action is required. Alongside this, AIST welcomes the Commission's finding that there is a need to improve the quality of advice. Funds are well placed to advise their members about retirement planning strategies and where appropriate retirement income products. This requires funds to consider the financial situation of the entire household and the members' age pension eligibility. However, many funds do not have this information about members and further action is also required to ensure that members get the advice that they need and funds have access to the right information. Happy to answer your questions.
Thank you very much, Eva, and thanks for keeping to time. A lot of puts, you've set a big batting order for us to work through with you. So let's, oh, it's really embarrassing, sorry. We have to, uni student earning her way in life. We had 16 participants yesterday, we learned a copy. So turning first to your opening remark about Australia's superannuation system being in the top few, based on the MERSA index. I think it's important just to distinguish that the MERSA index is really about measuring inputs in terms of sustainability of retirement balances, which is really what's our SG and it's compulsory, versus our task was really about assessing the performance of the super system, its competitiveness, its efficiency, is it really delivering for members? And I think we found when one in four funds persistently underperform, when one in three default products persistently underperform, when one in two retail products, choice products persistently underperform, and when you've got 10 million out of 30 million unintended multiple accounts, we don't think that that's a good report card. We think there are some serious problems with the system. And you agree with the twin problems, as I understand it from your opening statement. So let's turn first to persistent underperformance. How without our proposed changes would we get rid of persistent underperformance? How would you see persistent underperformance being weeded out?
Well, certainly the MySuper authorisation process needs to be strengthened, as you suggest. And in fact, you know, when MySuper first came in, it was pretty much a surprise to everyone, I think, that almost everyone that put in an application for a MySuper licence got one. So that, you know, perhaps the starting standards weren't particularly high enough and the regulator perhaps hasn't been doing enough in order to make sure that those standards that are part of our current regulatory regime are actually being met by funds. There's not enough pressure in relation to that. The, we absolutely believe that there should be merit-based criteria and that those should be rigorously applied. And those that don't make the cut shouldn't get default status.
Okay, so how do the current processes, and we're very careful to make sure that we looked at what are the current arrangements versus what's legislated and we assess both. We, how do they get rid of underperformers? They just decide who gets access to the keys to the kingdom, they don't then weed them out over time?
You're talking about the Fair Work Commission process?
Yeah, because when you look at sort of our underperforming talent default segment, of the 26, 15 are ones that the FWC have decided should have default award status.
Yeah.
So I think that a quality filter that has a strong focus on long-term net returns will take you, and is running the filter regularly, will partly deal with that problem. But I think you've got a valid point and maybe there is also a case for giving the expert panel or whoever it is, I don't want to sort of get distracted having a discussion about that, giving it one extra power, which is to pull funds that become underperformers within the cycle so that they don't stay in the system for the full course of the cycle. I think that that would be a reasonable thing to do.
Can I just, so for any body to decide to say, okay, you no longer have award status, you've underperformed, would require that body to have done its own independent analysis? That's kind of not the way the FWC works. The FWC works with people presenting their cases, the interested parties come and present their cases. And as the system currently works... present their cases. And as the system currently works or is envisaged to work, yes, there would be a filter, but that filter is about who's new getting access. It doesn't take those off. It doesn't mean that it's the best products that are attached to an award.
Look, we have always supported a filter that focuses on long-term net returns. I guess what we're saying is if that's not enough to deal with somebody becoming an underperformer during the course of a cycle, then it's possible to give the merit-based selection body, whoever that is, the power to pull a fund out of the system too.
Okay. The other point that you touched on in your opening remarks, Eva, and let's deal with performance first and then we'll come to unintended multiple accounts. That might be the best way to deal with the buckets, is we were also trying to deal with the twin problems of entrenched underperformance, unintended multiple accounts, but also in a world that made member engagement more likely, made it safer and simpler. How does the current system, which you would like to retain, encourage engagement in the default segment?
Well, I mean, we think a lot of the structure in the system is right, but needs tweaking in order to lift it. So it's not quite right in saying that we support the status quo. We support a heightened status quo, if you like. The, I've completely forgotten your question, sorry.
So coming back to your good point earlier, that you want to encourage engagement.
Engagement.
Or you want to just, and even the paper economists told us yesterday, it doesn't even have to be engagement. It can just be an interest when a decision can be made or an interest over time. So what do you think there needs to change in the current system to, because we have no, there's no engagement in default at the moment. So what do you think needs to change to create?
But there'd be no engagement in your proposed model either, when people are defaulted only once. And when they change jobs, there's never another nudge about superannuation at all.
So, well, I don't think that's right, because we're now saying for new job entrants, when you enter the market, you get your tax file number and then you make a choice.
Yes.
A supported, assisted, safe choice from a best-in-show list. But if you want to go further, there's an elevated MySuper authorised list. So we are creating that, and indeed the behavioural economists that we heard from yesterday in Sydney suggested that this was a unique way to create interest and engagement right at the get-go. And indeed, I think they're going to share some evidence that they've got around how that would create greater engagement and interest over time. So...
At that point, I think importantly as well, that the experimental survey that we did would suggest that about 95% of people will actually make a choice in that environment. And we know that that doesn't happen under the existing arrangement. So if we want to get that engagement to the levels that we think we might get with the best-in-show list for, certainly for new entrants and at the point of job turnover, I guess the question is, what would you see about changing in the current environment that might get that added engagement that we would anticipate from the model we're proposing?
So I think firstly, I don't know that promoting engagement at the point of people entering the workforce is the right objective or constant engagement is the right objective, but I'm looking forward to what the behavioural economists have to say about that. I think that engagement, it's appropriate that engagement is selective, not ongoing. I think that if there was, and there isn't, if there was an effective, simple way for people to actually make a comparison, then it would be a good thing if they did that each time they changed jobs. That would be about right, keeping in mind your data about how often people change jobs. But there is no mechanism for anybody to do that at the moment.
So in a world, and we agree completely on, let's go for a simple one-page MySuper dashboards, let the regulators just make it happen across all products. So we're dealing with the choice segment as well. But even in a world of all those MySuper dashboards, we heard yesterday from the behavioural economists that that's still too much for members to absorb, particularly given the current number of products in default, let alone getting into the choice segment. So behavioural economics took us to a best-in-show of up to 10 because members then did have a point of comparison, whether they be in default or in choice. So if we've agreed that we want to get member interest and engagement at the right moment, so we want them to be able to make informed choice, how do we get it without a best? What's your idea different to ours in terms of how you can achieve that with the current system with your tweaks?
I guess where we diverge from you is I don't know that we equate engagement with necessarily people making choices and moving. So I think that you can be engaged and be very happy with your default fund. I think that's probably the right thing for the majority of people. Your report finding that in the accumulation phase, most people are actually best served by a no-frills, low-fee, balanced growth product reinforces the fact that the default system should just put people into those high-performing products and they're probably well-placed to stay there. I want to be really clear that while we have lobbied for a very long time for the implementation of the choice dashboard regime, and we strongly support your recommendation about that, and it's, I would just note that ASIC in the last couple of weeks has again deferred the implementation of that regime, this time not for one year or two years, but I think it's for three or four years this time. We don't think that that is going to be enough to deal with the problem of underperformance that you are seeking to address and that we acknowledge exists. It's a necessary starting point because at the moment there is no transparency about the performance of the choice sector, which you have found underperforms overall and is a big part of the tale. But I think let's get real about this. People are in those products because they've been sold into them. That's what choice means in practice. It means they get sold into them. And you have acknowledged that there is an ongoing problem with the quality of advice. Recent history is telling all of us that the future of financial advice reforms hasn't fixed that problem. Increasingly, particularly in a post-Fofer world, many of those people are also in those products as a result of straight-up cross-selling, which is basically unregulated. So I would encourage you to think really carefully about the fact that that's what choice means. And while dashboards are really important, it's not going to be enough to get those members out of those funds or those funds out of the system.
Just in relation to our top 10, I think one of the missections, I think, about that top 10 is that it's only going to affect people in default and new workplaces. It's not really going to change the rest of the market very much. Why are we so concentrated on default? The important thing is that that top 10 is a signal to the rest of the market. So in relation, we would agree with you, there's problems with advice at the moment. One of the problems that people have is when they go to see an advisor, they don't have an easy benchmark or a reference that they can refer to. So that if they're recommended a particular product, it's very hard for them to say, well, you know, where else, what question should I be asking? It's pretty easy to say, I've got these 10 products here with really key metrics on them, and I can see that this one looks pretty good. And you're trying to sell me this. What's the difference? And why do you think this product would be better for me than that? And more than that, I think, we talked about the problems with Fofer, that ASIC themselves, and we mentioned this in our report, are saying that if that top 10 list was made available, that they could then use that as well to hold advisors to account. So where they're trying to press this, is it in the members' best interests? They've also got a much clearer benchmark to be able to go after advisors that do the wrong thing, to say, if you didn't recommend one of these top performing funds, or at least one that's equivalent with the good MySuper funds, what have you, you know, what was different about this client that put you there? So I think there's a misunderstanding that this, all our recommendations are about default. We want the default to be the pebble in the pond that quickly spreads with impacts throughout the system. So I guess without that top 10, we also see problems in trying to address the advice and the choice options that people are making outside the default segment. And I'll be interested in your views about how we might best deal with that if we didn't go with the top 10 list.
So I understand the strategy. If you had an effective default system and there were no underperforming default funds in the system, you should be able to do that now. Advisors should, I think, now be required to say to everybody who they switch, this is how much better off you're going to be compared with the default product you're in now. In fact, I think if you look at the switching rules, they are required to do that, but it doesn't happen. I would be really interested in ASIC's view about whether when ASIC does surveillances about the quality of retirement advice, switching advice now, whether they do an analysis of that now, whether they say for each file, how much better or worse is this person going to be at retirement as a result of this switch and whether they do the projection. So I agree with the strategy. I just think that a strong default system would enable both of those things. And in fact, they should be already happening now. And when I encourage you to think more about going, using dashboards as a really important starting point, but going further, that's exactly what I'm thinking about. Why can we have 11 million accounts and a trillion dollars in the choice sector when we know that it underperforms? How have those members been put in that position?
So I think that's why we see members in that segment being able to make informed choice. Comparability is not even an aspiration at the moment. So even if we get transparency, even if we deal with interventional powers of ASIC to get rid of really inappropriate products, trailing commissions, inappropriate fees, even if we sort of begin to mop up the egregious, for that member to make a choice in a world where there's still so many products without something as a benchmark, behavioural economics led us to the best-in-show to work in default segment, and it led us to the best-in-show to help meaningful, safe choice in the choice segment as well. So I think we're sort of on the same page in terms of what the same outcome for members. We want members out of bad products and underperforming products?
I think that's right. But what I often wonder is how, not whether, how the behavioural economics accounts for the role of intermediaries, whether that's cross-selling or advice, because I'm not convinced that a dashboard or a best-in-show list is going to overcome the impact of advice for those people.
Yeah, and whether people will trust an ATO website, a government entity dropdown list of, say, 10 best-in-show funds compared to a trusted relationship with an advisor.
I think that world's moved on. Okay, let's turn to...
There's still some trusted financial advice.
I think there are. I think we should be careful not to suggest the whole financial advisory industry is what it's been suggested to be. Let's move to unintended multiple accounts.
Yes.
When I was explaining this to some students, I, remember Fantasia, Mickey Mouse being the Sorcerer's Apprentice? No, I'm showing my age. Okay, I'm not going to use that as an analogy then. Okay, someone in the audience might remember this. So the way we've dealt with unintended multiple accounts today is to put the entire onus on the member to do it. And we know it just doesn't work. Then we put the onus on the ATO and government initiatives to try to promote auto consolidation and to get the members to do it and to get maybe some funds and employers to help out as well. We know from the evidence base today that one in three member accounts or 10 million accounts are unintended multiple. So clearly mopping up the legacy is not enough. We continue to create them with the way the architecture of our system works. So our public policy imperative is let's stop creating unintended multiple accounts. We've come up with default once. There could be other ways of doing it. But I guess my question is, do you agree that mopping up the legacy is still important, but do you agree that a public policy imperative is to stop them from being created?
Yes. It's just the mechanism of how you do that, right? So we've long been supporters of auto consolidation. That's still our position. Obviously, the recommendation from the Commission in the draft report is something that we're now looking much more closely at and consulting with members on.
So auto consolidation would be similar to the ISA proposal of balance rollover. Every time a member changes job, and we know that as members change jobs today, more than 50, just over 50%, have actually changed industry sector. So they're more likely to have unintended multiple accounts today than they were 27 years ago. So in that world, and I think you were here before, there's a little shopping list that needs to be addressed about what would be unintended consequences of the auto consolidation regime for a new job entrant going forward today. So that are things like, they still have multiple jobs, the additional admin costs, potential, albeit modest sequencing risk, how do you deal with insurance problems? What else was there?
Compiles costs for employers.
Yeah. So we were here and we will address those issues in our submission.
Great.
But I think that technology will enable auto consolidation to happen quickly, cheaply. And when you're looking at people in multiple jobs, I think it's also really important to remember that a lot of those people are earning very little in each of those jobs and actually not being paid super at all. So I think we need to be really clear about the size of this issue and the ability of technology to overcome these problems because I think that there is capacity, hasn't been historically, but there is capacity for auto consolidation to basically happen seamlessly and very quickly.
And I think that's, sorry, I think that's right for dealing with mopping up the legacy. But if in a forward-looking sense, if we're trying to create member engagement, if we deal with unintended multiple accounts through the auto consolidation, that means a new job entrant today is going to make their way through six or seven super funds before they retire. If we've all agreed that we want members to have engagement where it's appropriate for them to have engagement or interest or whatever else the behavioural economists call it, how do we do that if we're switching them? And it was a point that I think our Cathy and Anne's made earlier today, and indeed we heard from, through the academics yesterday that do lots of consumer surveys and choice experiments in this world. How do we do that if we're expecting them to keep up with seven funds, six or seven funds during their working life?
So just, you have... So just to be clear, I don't actually think we're on a completely different page here. When we talk about auto consolidation, I think that we're talking about something that's happening simultaneously with people changing jobs essentially. And I think that it will give people confidence in the system more broadly if they feel confident that when they change jobs, their super will follow them.
But it's only the balance. It's not the super account. They have no relationship with the fund, which is, I thought, what funds would want.
So I guess, as one of the behavioural economists said yesterday, when I change jobs, I don't change my bank account. Why would I change my superannuation? I don't get it. Aren't young members going to say, why are they moving me? It's got nothing to do with changing my job. I've got a relationship with my fund. I'm just starting to get to know them. They're starting to get to know me. I'm familiar with how they communicate. I've got an app that deals, you know, that I can go to for my fund now. I'm comfortable with all that. Now I've changed my job and you've moved funds for me. Why have you done that? That's making my life more difficult. So...
So I don't know that that has, sorry.
Sorry. From a member perspective, there's a question about what is the advantage to the member in being moved when they move jobs compared to being able to stay with the one fund and getting a long-term relationship that might be more like any other product. We don't change things when we change our jobs.
Well, I reckon there might be benefits to people, consumers of changing banks more often. So I think that would be a point I would make about that. I think that there are benefits of being in occupational-related super funds and we'll address that in our submission. But I think you're hearing from one of our members next because I can see them there. And I'd really encourage you to ask them about all the work that they do chasing unpaid super for the construction industry because if people, if that is dispersed by funds having huge memberships across all kinds of different industries, I wonder about the capacity of CBUS to do the great work that they do chasing that money. And the incidence of unpaid super is concentrated in particular industries, unfortunately.
Yeah. I'm also not convinced that by making people choose a fund when they first, you know, start starting the workforce, that that creates an ongoing engagement with that fund. It is very potentially a set and forget. I've made my choice and now I can forget about it. I don't think that, I'm not yet convinced, like Elsa, I'd be very interested to see what the behavioural economists have to say, but I just don't see how doing that once at the start of your working life gets you into a relationship that's not happening for members at the moment.
I guess the counterfactual that was suggested to us yesterday, and these are my words, not theirs, is you have a moment to begin a relationship with a fund, a safe fund, over time. At the moment, it's not set and forget. At the moment, it's, I don't know. I have nothing to forget in the default arrangements. So that was, so I guess be careful that our counterfactual has to... So that was, so I guess be careful that our counterfactual has to be the current arrangements compared to what we're recommending. But if you've got other ways of, although we're now at draft report stage three, of thinking of, because I think we are on the same page in terms of what we're trying to get for member outcomes. I think you were here before when we did a little kite fly, which the commission doesn't do all that often. We've heard a lot of feedback and, and it's something that we've tried to grapple with around getting de-politicisation of the selection of the expert panel for best in show. We won't go through the history of politicisation of the FWC appointment process because I could quote many people on both sides of politics, but we won't for the benefit of time. So the suggestion that we've got is we want the expert panel to be accountable to government of the day, because government of the day is the one that's compelled people to save through their superannuation. And, and the two ways we see that working is that the government would make the appointment. And then the process would be incredibly open and transparent, and it's every four years. So we think that injects a level of accountability. But people would still suggest, and rightly so, that the government of the day is still making those appointments. So our suggestion, our kite fly suggestion is if we were to de-politicise it by having a selection committee comprised of people who are above reproach, who are have no fear or favour to a government of the day, but can represent the government in making that decision. So, you know, a, a small panel, selection committee chaired by the governor of the Reserve Bank with two other statutory appointees. They would decide who the expert panel is. So, and I know that that's something we're just learning today and you may not feel comfortable commenting on it, but that was the biggest criticism that we had from the expert panel doing the best in show. So it'd be good to get your thoughts on it either now or, or in your post-draft report submission.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. So it, it wasn't in the report and so it was the first time we, we did hear about it was, was today and we'll, we'll consider it. However, I think more important than who makes the decisions is what is the criteria? Because if the, if the criteria is, is sacrosanct and addresses, you know, the, the right things, then it almost doesn't matter who makes those decisions, provided that they're bound by, by those, applying those criteria.
I think it does matter who makes it either because you want it to be an expert panel that have been selected to know that they are more likely than not to get the choice right. Because at the end of the day, with any selection process, with any prescriptive criteria, there is still a modicum of good judgment. And you want people who understand investments, understand members and are unconflicted in doing that. But, but we do want to get feedback on, we've set out some high-level principles for the criteria for the panel to apply. We're very conscious, we don't want to create perverse or unintended consequences. Indeed, we had a very good discussion with Australian Super on that yesterday. And so we, we'll probably go much further with the level of prescription we'll have around those criteria for our final report. So we would like to get feedback on that. That would be very he- helpful. And I guess the other thing is, at the end of the day, having a panel that is still accountable to the government of the day, whereas the other process that we have at the moment is not accountable to anybody. It's a judicial body. And so we kind of struggle with that. That's a bit of a deal breaker for us.
We'll consider that in our submission.
Thank you very much. Okay. Was there anything else that we should have asked you that we didn't? That hasn't given you a chance to say what you would like to have said today?
I just, I just want to really reiterate the point about the fact that the, that the choice sector is the sector that is performing the worst and it's, you have a real opportunity to do more about that. And, and we talked about people in the APRA-regulated choice sector, but the same is also true for SMSFs. So like people in choice APRA-regulated products, the SMSF members didn't just drive down to a shopping centre and choose an SMSF. They're there because they were advised to by accountants and by financial planners. And there is nothing in this for them because the default system quality filter, whatever that looks like, isn't going to fix their problem. Even though we strongly support a quality filter. Dashboards aren't going to fix their problem. We strongly support dashboards, but that's not going to help them at, at the point that they are sold into their SMSF. And your findings, which I think are really clear are that people with a balance of under a million dollars are worse off in their SMSF than they would be in the APRA-regulated sector as a whole, let alone if they were in a really high-quality default fund.
So we agree completely with all of that.
I would encourage you to do something about that. Now, the obvious thing that has been talked about for the last, you know, I have been listening to this discussion for years and years and years is establishing a threshold for people to leave the APRA system and end up in an SMSF. Nobody's been brave enough to take that step yet. Arguably regulators should have. And that hasn't happened, but I would really encourage you to think about that.
I think the only thing I'd say there, and look, I think we're on the same page in terms of it's quite egregious, particularly if it's very questionable advice. It's gotten some poor punter with a low balance into an SMSF. And indeed, we're now starting to see a lot of churn of people going into SMSFs and coming back out again and with low balances. And indeed, we've asked the SMSF Association yesterday in the hearings to show us the evidence. So we can better understand the distribution across time of member balances within SMSF. But we're also mindful that the government has compelled people to save. And while SMSF is the ultimate form of choice, people do attach a value to control. And it's fine for a member to do that, to attach a value to control, as long as in doing so, they know how much it's going to cost them. What am I taking off the table when I retire? And so for us, it becomes a question of them having better information about that and having advice that's not questionable when they're making those decisions. So we kind of struggle with what's the best way of dealing with the problem. Doing a, you know, a $1 million cut-off is quite a blunt instrument. When we're still compelling people to save, they might want to pay that price for the control. But we're also mindful that it's taxpayers subsidising that as well.
Yeah, I think, and I, I wouldn't, I, I want to make that point too. That's all very well, but I don't, I have never seen anybody be able to model or demonstrate how you would in a meaningful way trade off control for savings. I've never seen a, I've looked at a lot of pieces of SMSF advice in a previous life and nobody's, nobody does that well. But also it is a compulsory system and there's $30 billion of, of tax concessions going into this system every year. And so, and that's a good thing because, you know, that's, that's compensating people for their deferred consumption. But I reckon a lot of those tax concessions are going to SMSFs because, because they're the high balance members. So, so, you know, at some point, public policy has to kick in and say, actually, you can't trade off retirement savings that include lots of tax concessions for control, which is probably illusory anyway in many cases.
Well, it's a bit perverse because those that aren't doing well in SMSF are those with the smaller balances that aren't getting all those tax concessions we're talking about. So so I agree, we, we, we think that there is an issue. We're trying to make sure that the advice component works best. And some transparency. And indeed, the feedback that we've had post-release of the draft report is a lot of people who have SMSFs and have balances well under $1 million of actually asking their advisors, should they be staying in an SMSF?
So a good way to progress that conversation that those people are now having with our advisors is to force the advisors to do a projection and demonstrate this is where you will be when you retire if you stay with this strategy. And this is where you will be if you go back to the APRA-regulated system. It doesn't, it shouldn't be buried in a, you know, 50-page SOA. It should be, I mean, it's a bar graph, isn't it? With two columns on it.
And I think that's a good suggestion because we're in a world now where ASIC has indicated to us that they want to play a more active role in the super space, particularly around advice and products. They've already given us an indication of how best in show would help them with FOFa advice in the choice segment. But equally, the evidence base that we've got on SMSF, they could also use that for guidance along the lines that you're talking about. So that's something we might take up with them and indeed we'll probably look at addressing in our final report. So thank you. That's a really good idea. On that positive note, we will say thank you for appearing today. Thank you for being brave.
Thank you.
All righty. And we look forward to your post-draft report submission. And I know that we're running a tad late. So with no further ado, I'd like to welcome the good vote from CBUS to join us. Good morning. Thank you very much for, for being so kind to agree to, to join us and, and we were hoping that you could because there are some important issues that you have them inside in the lens too that, that others in, in the system don't. So perhaps just first, if you could just state your name and the organisation you represent, just purely for our recognition for our technician doing the transcript. And then if you'd like to make some brief opening remarks, that'd be great. Thank you.
Rob Masson from CBUS.
Robbie Campo, CBUS Superfund.
Tim Reilly from CBUS.
So I'll make a few opening comments. So thank you very much for the opportunity to appear in relation to your draft report. We do intend to make a submission on the report, but we thought today we would focus just on three main issues that we, are our key focus. In particular, your recommendations putting forward alternative mechanisms for default allocation. Your recommendations proposing certain exclusions on offering of default insurance and your findings in relation to lifecycle products. So your draft report obviously proposed quite significant changes to the manner of allocating a default fund to a member who doesn't select their own fund upon starting a new job. While CBUS is supportive of there being a merit-based selection of default funds to ensure that there's a very high bar and only quality funds are able to offer themselves as defaults. We would urge you to think about the nature of your recommendations and the impact on funds such as ours, which are focused on an industry and which offer products and services which are very tailored to the needs of the members working within that industry and their demographic, as is the case with CBUS. So your recommendations pose somewhat of an existential threat or crisis for CBUS. We, we could be a best in show fund. You know, we're a fund that regularly features among, you know, the cohort of the highest performing funds overall market conditions. However, moving to such a system would not be good for our members who currently benefit from being in a fund which has a very strong industry affinity. We provide products, in, in particular our insurance offering and other services, which is specifically tailored to the unique needs and industry conditions in which our members work. On the basis of your recommendations, if a member failed to make a choice within 60 days, they would be defaulted to a product via a sequential allocation without consideration of the industry in which they're working and the specific insurance or other needs they might have. In addition, the Fund for Life concept would not cater for those who who move jobs. So we might have a member who is in the construction industry, which obviously is a much more hazardous industry than most. So were they to start in another fund and then move into construction, they might not have the benefit of the insurance that we offer. So there are many other products that offer default insurance, which specifically exclude many of the occupational categories and working conditions in which our members work. So they would be completely excluded from the insurance offering. That said, we do support a merit-based selection process for default funds. We do think that retaining a strong connection with the industry does make it logical to retain the connection with the industrial framework for allocation of defaults. We see that there are elements of it that are not inconsistent with your recommendations. But certainly we do think that operating under the auspices of a semi-judicial body is actually desirable. So I suppose we noted with interest the discussion with the previous witnesses in relation to that. We do think the process though could be further enhanced through your recommendations about enhancing the MySuper authorisation process. And we do strongly think that to be playing in this space, actually to be offering superannuation at all, you should really be meeting a very high threshold in terms of your offering. Turning to insurance. Insurance offers very significant value and is an important element of the super system. But it's particularly so for those members working in physically demanding and hazardous occupations, such as those in building and construction. As a relative newcomer to the industry, my visits to the work sites where our members work is very eye-opening because even though there is a very high regard for health and safety, health and safety standards, it is an inherently hazardous environment, standing up on top of a half-built 30-story building. You know, there are just inherent dangers that exist. So while we're supportive of the overarching policy objectives of protecting super savings from undue erosion by insurance premiums and ensuring that Australians are not paying for insurance they do not need, we would strongly caution against some of the unintended consequences of the blanket application of exemptions. CBUS is very concerned that were your recommendations to proceed, default insurance coverage would remove access to insurance for many of our members who need the cover, who rely on the cover and for whom we have a very successful track record of honouring claims. This includes many members from the years of ages of 21 to 25. So we treat members under 21 differently to those over 21, but we know from 21 to 25, they're definitely relying on that cover. But also our inactive members. And we might go into a little bit more detail about the different profile of our inactive members. We also note the draft report's comments and questions regarding lifecycle products and their inclusion in MySuper. We have conducted research on this matter and the research found that the investment case for de-risking or lifecycle in the accumulation phase is not strong. We found that de-risking provides very little downside protection over a range of de-risking periods. Generally foregone returns during better investment periods is material and either offsets or more than offsets the protection during adverse investment periods. And we know this is consistent with your findings. A large number of CBUS members have low to modest balances during a short, shorter working life and low salary progression through their working life. 98% of our members receive some form of age pension. And 48% of members have around 80% of their retirement income provided by the age pension. That might shift over time. But currently, we certainly think members are in a better position if they maximise the opportunity for growth throughout their working life rather than managing risk at or near the end of their working life, resulting in a smaller lump sum to fund retirement. On the back of this research, we determined that our MySuper option would not incorporate the lifecycle investment approach. We were conscious though that this meant we did need to cater to members in terms of offering advice and other support so that they understood and knew what their options were if they wanted to reduce their exposure to risk. As a final point, CBUS supports the PC's findings or draft recommendations that a default option is not warranted in the MyRetirement space. So I think we have a few other comments and observations, but we've probably time that we took some of your questions.
That's great, Robbie. Thank you. And you've set a, a good working agenda for us to, to work through with you this morning. I guess the starting point really should be getting a better understanding of the CBUS membership and why it is that tailoring might be required. So, and I guess we're sort of struggling with, we're trying to do a system-wide review.
Yes.
And so we look at the changes in the modern workforce today. Not that job turnover is higher or job tenure is lower. It's actually not, even though people suggest otherwise. But we know that when people do change jobs, they tend to move to different industry sectors. And we know that people are holding more multiple jobs than they have historically. So that's kind of the backdrop for us. But so then it's important to kind of understand, well, where might it be different than the averages of the system? So for the CBUS membership, is it fair to say that of that membership, how much of them are actually in the construction industry in the high-risk cohort that you've identified that requires the insurance?
Yes, probably between 70 to 80% of our membership. So we have-
Are in high-risk jobs. So they wouldn't be-
Are, are in the commercial construction industry.
Okay. So there's commercial construction, which could be like me sitting behind a desk. And then there's commercial construction that's on that 30th floor. And I get nervous just thinking about that. What percentage of your workforce is on the 30, 30th floor with no, nothing around them?
So we think it's around the 70% mark in the blue collar component of-
Okay. So that's blue collar. Are blue collar all considered to be high risk in terms of losing eligibility for the types of insurance that we, that can be offered for default, under default super?
So if you're working in that industry-
So if you're working in that environment, um, the chances are you're working at heights. So they'll, they'll, um, the exclusion of certain types of coverage, and we have just recently done a benchmarking exercise to look specifically at this issue. So different other alternative group insurance covers don't all have the same types of exclusions. But it's very common for there to be an exclusion for anyone working above ten metres. Um, and so that would say, you know, all members working in that sector.
And is the exclusion because the insurer just won't underwrite it across a pool? Or is the exclusion because they would if you required it in the policy, but it's just going to cost a lot more?
Uh, well, I guess it's a combination of both. So I suppose the, uh, creation of exclusions, um, in other group policies is in an effort to, um, you know, get a better pricing. And so certainly, um, we know that, um, the insurance that we provide is incredibly good value and delivers our members insurance that, uh, they would either not be able to get or certainly not be able to get at the price that we're able to get it. And certainly with the generosity of scope and, and terms. But it certainly affects our pricing. So were we to be, um, in an environment where we're competing for the whole, you know, any worker within the economy, it wouldn't make sense to have those tailored arrangements. Because while they're very beneficial and represent very good value for our membership, um, you know, it's not the cheapest insurance on the market because it does have, um, you know, coverage of working conditions and occupational groups and, um, even down to the way we have, um, definitions in place that recognises, um, if you're a steel fixer and you become injured, your capacity to go off and retrain and do a number of other things is going to be more limited. So even in terms of the way in which, um, uh, uh, the, the product is structured and the definitions that are put in place is reflective of that, you know, tailoring to the unique circumstances of our membership.
So would it be possible to understand then, so say in a world where, um, CBUS was not in existence and we had a top ten best in show. If it were a requirement that the top ten best in show were to ensure that if there were any high risk, um, employees in their membership, that that was a feature of a policy to apply, would we know what premium uplift that would be across a larger pool of individuals? I'm just trying to work out, do you, am I making?
So I think that, um, having all of those, creating a group which is, um, really targeted to that group of workers in the economy who have that exposure makes sense. I think we're trying to ensure that every fund, uh, was able to accommodate that. I think you would, I just don't think it would be very efficient. Why? I'm not sure if I've got this understanding question.
But if the underwriter looks through to the cohort and you know what occupation they're in, they would only price it for the number that are, that are actually at that risk. So one of the problems that we, we identified in our work is that a lot of the, the, the group policies don't really have a look through. You're, you're an exception because you do know the occupations of your membership very well, but a lot of them actually don't have a look through. So they, they deal with it by excluding because they can't price it in.
Yeah.
I'm thinking of a world with a large best in show where some of the members might be in high risk occupations. But if you've got to look through to what their occupations are and you're across a big pool, you could still cater for that policy entitlement, but it wouldn't be a hike across the entire pool. Cause the, the underwriters actually pricing for it according to what cohort might be eligible for it. Does that make sense?
So we can certainly have a look at this in terms of the submission we provide. I mean, I think one of the things is because, um, we know the cohort that we're providing for, um, and we create very clear parameters around our offering, which we know are more expansive. It does create a high degree of certainty. Um, so, you know, we know that, um, uh, uh, members know that when they claim, you know, that, that, um, their claims are going to be honoured. So I think one of the things about if you had, um, particular requirements and you're trying to cover a much broader group, um, there's normally conditions attached to being able to uh, make claims against, you know, if there's only a certain proportion that are covered by the, the high risk component. And so, you know, the minute you make things more conditional, you increase disputation and you create much more uncertainty about whether claims are going to be able to be successfully made.
The other thing that'd be good to get a handle on is of your membership, um, how much of them are in construction for life? Like you would have members coming and going based on young members entering the construction industry or related industries. And then some of them, you know, a lot of them actually don't work through to a, um, uh, an older age in that industry for, for obvious reasons. If it's physically demanding work, because the idea of, um, so you're being able to cater for them throughout their working life, um, in a default once only world. So.
Yeah. So, I mean, we, we do, um, see in our statistics that there is a proportion um, of our membership who move into other industries. Uh, I think that the more common progression for our membership is to start off as an employee and then make the transition into self-employment and as in becoming an employer. So, um, that's actually the more common transition. So it's true that it's physically taxing work. And you can't, you know, you can't be a steel fixer for your whole life.
But you can be an employer of some.
But you, but a very common transition. So we have, um, quite a significant proportion of our members who are also our employers.
And so with the tailoring for your membership, it's largely around insurance where things have to be different. It's not so much about what your default investment product offering is for accumulation?
No, I'd probably disagree with that and I might.
Oh, no, it's an open question.
Yes. So, so I think that actually, you know, the point we made about, um, our consideration of life cycle did take into account the fact that, um, we know that our members tend to, um, retire earlier. They do have a, um, a shorter working life and they actually have a shorter life. Um, and so this is not, um, something that, um, this also informs, um, the design of products. I don't know if you want to.
But apart from saying no to life cycle through your analysis, and we'll come back to that in a moment. Is there anything else that's kind of different for your membership that informs the default investment strategy?
Yes, I'll comment on that. In relation to cash inflows, that's quite important in terms of the illiquid assets that we can invest in. So we tend to have a higher allocation to illiquid investments versus some other super funds. And that's because we, or partly because of the cash flows that we have coming into the fund. And we stress that each six months to make sure that it's still applicable and it still is. And we, as we look out over the next few years, it doesn't seem likely to change. So we've, we're able to till our investment strategy to have more illiquid investments, like infrastructure, property, uh, private equity, those sorts of investments.
So then, because we are sort of making sure that we look through the risks of a best in show default once. I think with the default once, it's kind of like default once unless you choose to do something else. So there is kind of like a safety valve there. If an employee goes to a workplace where CBUS has a relationship with the employer, there's, and indeed we've got some very carefully crafted words in our draft report that suggests that we wouldn't want to preclude that from continuing where hopping off a best in show or not going into a best in show would be in the best interests of that member for a cohort like yours. So that's one safety valve, um, uh, that we've got in mind with the system in terms of where good employers, working with a, good unions and a good industry fund could still play a role in a, in a, a best in show world. And the defaulting only once again, it's only, so the members still have the choice. It's not like once they've made that decision to default, that they would then be stuck with that throughout their working life.
Yes, that would still, um, have an impact on the way our risk pooling works because the minute you introduce um, an element of choice or opting in, the underwriter has to assume that those who are opting in are doing so for a reason. So it does, you know, it's that issue of self-selection. So I think that.
That's opting in for insurance, but that wouldn't be if they chose to leave, they could have defaulted into best in show number one. But they decided not to because they went to their workplace, the employer spoke to them about CBUS and the insurance situation. So they go to their, their ATO, my gov, and then they choose CBUS. CBUS may not be on the best in show or it isn't the best in show or it's, we would like to fix the best in show. I know you would.
We'd like to.
Definitely my super authorised elevated, um, and then they just go and choose that one. So that still wouldn't be them opting into the insurance. That's them opting into your default product.
Yes, I think that the, um, you know, insurers are very careful when they're, um, constructing their underwriting arrangements. So I think there would be an assumption that insurance is one of the key features of our product. And so were, um, pay, uh, workers in our industry, um, able to decide or, you know, there was less defaulting naturally into CBUS, then I think they would make some assumptions about those who choose the product to doing so for the purposes of the insurance.
If you could confirm that, Robbie, because that's quite an important issue for us to understand in terms of how the underwriters are pricing the group policies at the moment. Yeah, that, that would be helpful.
Yes, uh, and, and we can certainly make sure that our submission, um, addresses that. I know that there's obviously other proposals on foot that have, um, necessitated us to really examine this in a lot of detail. So I know that the broad nature of our risk pool is central to our capacity to get, get a really good outcome for our, our members. So any, any changes to that, um, will have the impact of, um, either increasing the pricing across the board, um, but also increasing the likelihood of, um, exclusions having to be applied. Um, so we undertook a really, um, substantial retendering of our underwriting a couple of years ago that resulted in, um, changes to our product, um, different treatment of those under twenty one. Um, so, you know, we did look at our younger members and know that for CBUS, actually from twenty one, our members are often working full time, um, they tend to settle down younger. I had a very amusing exchange on a building site where one of our members was talking to me and he found out I had a teenage daughter and he's, we were the same age. And he said, gosh, you had children, so late. And he was ready for grandchildren, same age as me. So.
Yeah.
That, that really brought home to me, you know, the very different lifestyle patterns that, that comes with blue collar work and starting as an apprentice and working from a much younger age. So, um, uh, yeah, so our insurance.
Yeah. And, and that's the difficult trade off we've got where, in a situation where we would have liked the industry to have gone further, like Australian super and yourselves, and tailor the insurance offering for the needs of your membership and thus avoiding the problem where in other industry segments where under twenties get no value from life insurance, um, yet they're, they're paying those premiums. So, and then becomes a bit of a blunt instrument by then ordaining something across the entire system which can then affect cohorts. So we are trying to work through and better understand what those unintended consequences might be from the broader approach to address an underlying problem where other funds haven't done that, that work that, that you guys and other, some of the other larger funds have done.
And on a related point then, we would really encourage you to distinguish between the incidence of multiple accounts as opposed to inactive accounts. So, um, we know that in our industry, members will often feature, uh, or look like they're inactive. Um, and it's not necessarily the case that they've commenced work elsewhere and have opened another account and have the benefit of insurance elsewhere. So it's very often the case that members look inactive because your engagement in construction is typically per big job that you do. So if you work on Colin's arch, you know, you'll work for fourteen months and then there'll be a break. So they often have breaks between those engagements and they also have periods where they're engaged as a contractor or self-employed, so engaged in a capacity where they're not, um, entitled to SG.
Yeah. So again, we need to be careful when we're turning on and off things that we know that if an, uh, an automatic turn off is about to happen, we need to make sure the members are comfortable with that as well as a bit of a protective mechanism. So we sort of avoid those sort of unintended consequences. And indeed, we, we learnt yesterday something that we hadn't heard before about turning on and off around TPD is pretty, it's not good for the member. Um, we're looking at that in the context of defaulting only once versus balance rollover with members. Um, it's, it's quite problematic. We might then move to life cycle if that's okay. Um, and it's good for us to, um, because life cycle was actually an area we weren't planning to do a lot of work on until we discovered, um, that thirty percent of my super um, products were life cycle products, which might have caused us to pause. And so we did some stochastic modernisation. So it'd be good to understand the work that CBUS has done because hopefully that gives us a little bit of feedback in terms of the analysis that we've done, that we're trying to then apply across the default segment more broadly.
Okay. So I'll take you through that very briefly. We undertook this analysis in two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen. And at the starting analysis, we envisaged that we probably would consider this quite closely and we thought it's a possibility we introduce life cycle. But we wanted to do a lot of analysis around that. So what we did is we commissioned frontier advisors under our guidance to do some analysis around that for our default members. And what we did is look at de-risking over a number of different profiles. So we looked at de-risking from forty five through to sixty three and fifty through to sixty three. And we looked at the balance outcomes through simulations using a st, a stochastic approach, but also using historic approach as well. And in both cases, what we found is most, in most occasions, the members would be worse off if they went down the life cycle route. Now, there were occasions where that wasn't the case, but that was a small, uh, uh, percentage of, uh, the time. So when we looked at the analysis, what we came to, uh, the view of was that life cycle wasn't going to be suitable for our default members. Um, we thought, uh, there were some members that may want to do risk and as Robbie alluded to, they were best catered for elsewhere through advice and, uh, different products. But in terms of the default, this wasn't the best way of, uh, a path forward for our members.
And Tim, of the small cohort that could have benefited from a life cycle, a, a well crafted life cycle, um, product, what were their characteristics that, that made them, that, that, that insurance policy wasn't a benefit for them?
It was more in relation to the timing of the de-risking rather than the member themselves. So some members, if you exclude the members preferences for a moment, so we just looked at what happened through time. It's really when the de-risking occurred. So if you're a fortuitous in terms of the timing of the de-risking, when you look through the historic analysis, for example, you could end up with a better outcome versus other times. So it's really in relation to the timing.
So it's timing with market cycles?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Yes, there's the timing of the market cycle. So we looked at the worst three year return, the worst five year return, those sorts of things and said, if you're a fortuitous, have a look, uh, de-risking at exactly the right time, what would be the net benefit over, say, a five or a three year period? Generally it was quite small, uh, because what, one of the things you have with de-risking is the de-risking event, say the GFC, that lasts for about eighteen months, but you're typically de-risking over a longer time period. So there's an opportunity cost prior to the GFC in de-risking, which had a very strong returns. And also you have very strong returns from March onwards, uh, March two thousand and nine onwards. So you, you're foregoing that strong return period for the negative event. So you need to look at the total effect. So you do get a benefit during the GFC in that case, but you also lose on the way up and lose on the recovery phase out of GFC.
So then it's only with the benefit of hindsight, you could tell a member by their age, who would benefit from life cycle? Where they'd get a net benefit, which is kind of the same with any insurance policy. You can only know with the benefit of hindsight whether or not it's paid off for you.
It was primarily the, the timing. There is a net benefit potentially from a risk preference perspective. So you might have a member who's quite risk averse.
Yep.
And they don't want to live through a negative event.
Yep.
And they may be more inclined to switch.
Happy to take the growth off the table.
Yeah.
So that then sort of gets us to where we haven't had a draft recommendation, but we were sort of leaning towards that for us to default a vanilla member into a life cycle product, which thirty percent of the current my super products are life cycle, didn't to us make sense based on that stochastic analysis. You'd really need to know the members' risk preferences, what sort of, what their age was, what sort of balance they'd have at retirement, i.e. what sort of sequencing risks they might face at retirement to make a call about whether life cycle is something that's appropriate for them, which kind of took us into the world of choice with financial advice, not making it a default product. What, what, based on the work that you've done and based on having a, a look at what's in our report, do you think that's a reasonable landing?
Yeah, I think it's a reasonable landing point. The, the other consideration is that there's a lot of time in retirement as well. So you actually have quite a long investment horizon once you retire.
Yeah. And once you do risk, people don't up risk again.
Yeah, that's, that's right. That's right. So for us, and it's probably a more broader conclusion which you're making, um, it, it doesn't make a lot of sense to have a life cycle approach. Now, it may do for some membership bases, um, which have different risk, risk preferences and very strong risk aversion coming through. Um, that wasn't the case in, in the context of our membership. We thought it was better to try and maximise the balances as we move into retirement rather than having a de-risking phase going into retirement.
Might just pop back to insurance, just for one other little quick question. Um, income protection, we called that out as a little bit of a culprit, but it tended to be a culprit associated with unintended multiple accounts. But it is also an expensive form of insurance, particularly if it's a policy that goes beyond two years. Has CBUS done work around? Has CBUS done work around this, Robbie, and where did you land on income protection for your members in terms of value for money?
So we haven't and the reason is that most of our members, we don't have a default income protection offering. Most of our members
Okay.
Have income protection through workplace arrangements. So there are separate workplace arrangements that apply to most of our membership. So we do offer it, but members choose it. So there's no impact.
So why do workplace arrangements then cover the other insurance fee members? Why is it just income protection that's covered? Is it just the way the contracts historically have evolved?
I guess so. I think maybe because they, there was a period where, this is my best guess, so we'll clarify in our submission perhaps. I think that initially super funds offered death and TPD, but not income protection that followed. And so I think that in that intervening period, there was the development of these other schemes and so they continued to.